Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 21st at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Oh, here we go. The quorum just walked in.
Yeah, we've got quorum.
We got a quorum.
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stirk?
Here.
Chantet?
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer? Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Yeah, we do have a quorum to conduct tonight's meeting. Next item is item two, which is items removed, added, or changed. Laura, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Item three, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything for us that is not on the agenda? Item four, ordinance 18-54, declaring surplus property and authorizing the sale of property. Alderman, Wolf.
Thank you. As I mentioned last night, this is for the 1955 and a half panel truck that ESDA has. For those of us that have been here a long, long, long time, it used to be actually a fire department vehicle, I'm sure, back in the 50s, and then converted over into, I think actually one of the other city departments used it, and then ESDA ended up with it. And they've been keeping it for, I think they've had it for about 25 years. Had it for a long, way before I was here, so... We have any idea what you guys are, what's your plan to try to... I'm gonna put it on public surplus, and I've got three people that have said that they're interested in it. One is a former firefighter. I actually got an email from Susan, one of the reporters. She sent it to somebody who has like a museum or something like that, and they're interested. And then our former ESDA coordinator had said that he was interested too. So, I'll make sure they all know about it when I post it on public surplus, but it, from looking at those things on the website, I was surprised. They can get it, you know, $5,000, $7,000. Yeah, I think it'll be interesting to see how it goes. Anybody have any questions? Comments? We care to make a motion to recommend the council ordinance 18-54 declaring surplus property.
So, move.
Second? Motion and second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consent?
Back to one consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item number five, approval for the Class D1 liquor license for Alvera Foods Incorporated. DBA is El Taco Grande at 4 through 6 North River Street. Alderman, Atech.
Yes, so, the new business owner, or to-be business owner of El Taco Grande, applied for a liquor license under the name Alvera Food Incorporated, and the police department conducted their investigation and background check and found no reason why we could not or shouldn't grant them this Class D1 liquor license, other than making it subject to the completion of the transfer of business ownership. So, I move that we recommend the council the approval of Class D1 liquor license application for Alvera Food Incorporated doing business as El Taco Grande at 46 North River Street, Batavia, subject to completion of the transfer of business ownership.
Second?
I should add that scheduled for September 16th.
Still second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Dick can go on consent also, can't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next one is the approval of the Class D1 liquor license for Krabby Boil to be located at 220 North Randall Road, Alderman, Atech.
Krabby Boil also applied for a liquor license, and the police conducted their investigation and found no reason why we shouldn't grant them the liquor's license. So, I move that we recommend to council the approval of the Class D1 liquor license application for Krabby Boil, Batavia Limited Liability Company doing business as Krabby Boil at 220 North Randall Road, Batavia, Illinois.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and that can go on the consent agenda also.
Okay.
Next one then is item number seven, which is a presentation on the mid-year reports
for public safety, police, and fire. Alderman, or, Lauren Newman, are you gonna start us out with that, or do you just wanna turn it right over to Chief?
Well, I would say that among all of the departments, we receive probably the most feedback, positive feedback, about our police and our fire departments who come to the aid of our citizens when they need them the most, when their safety is at risk. And I stopped down to talk with the officers after about a week and a half ago, the event that happened over by HC Storm School, just to thank them from everybody about the professionalism and the way that they handled that, getting information out to people. They really just do an exceptional job. So, I'm looking forward to having them tell you a little bit about what's been going on internally in their department and some of the statistics thus far this year. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Huel.
Considering this is the mid-year report, I just included the January-June statistics just like I did last year. If you have any questions about things that have occurred recently, we can talk about that afterwards if you like. Essentially, these are the year-to-date stats for Part I crimes, mostly down in all categories except for motor vehicle theft and burglary, and some of those include burglary and motor vehicle, which is different from motor vehicle theft, items inside of the vehicles. We've had six motor vehicle thefts this year, which is a pretty substantial uptick. We have apprehended at least one of the groups that was stealing vehicles, and it was associated with the burglaries of motor vehicle that are going around the western suburb right now. But, other than that, you know, the majority, as usual, of our Part I and X crimes, our property crimes, account for almost 70%, and they are down. I will, for the purpose of clarity, last year, when I gave the mid-year, the theft totals were superimposed, or the numbers were transposed. I think I indicated on the slide, it was 127, and it was actually 217, but they're down this year as well. Crash totals for the six-month snapshot, up this year, a bit, about 51 crashes, but we did have a much harsher winter this year, and the majority of the increase is in the first quarter. On January, over 40 more crashes than there were the previous year, and then another uptick in March where you had some more bad weather. Bad weather continued later this year than it did last year. But, after that second quarter, basically down those three months, or static, we're in, or, so this is on trajectory to have us a little bit ahead of last year's statistics for the year totals, but the last couple of months, we've seen a decrease as well. Traffic stops are also down a little bit this year, down about 400 traffic stops overall with the patrol division workforce. Variety of reasons, we're down about just under 9, or 10%. We have officers that are in the military that have been away. We have our traffic enforcement unit officer that had to go through some mandatory training for his inclusion in the Kane County Action Reconstruction Team. It's extensive training. It's usually weeks at a time. I think he's gone to two 40-hour courses this week, so it's taken him out of his assignment for at least two weeks this year. We had maternity leave as well. Another important one, and the most important one is the part-time assignment of the patrol division officer to the Kane County DEA heroin initiative. So, since April, that officer has been going back and forth between his uniform assignment and his non-uniform assignment as well, and that's taken some of the statistics out of self-initiated field activities. And that was done as a result of the hold or the freeze on the 41st officer to be included in a drug task force. So, here's our personnel overview for the year. Our authorized strength, 40 officers, six full-time sworn, five part-time employees, three of which are in our records section, and we've really been having, we've really been struggling maintaining part-time employees in our records section. Actually, we just notified on Friday that we're losing another one who has to move out of state kind of abruptly, so next Sunday will be her last day at work, so we're really struggling in our part-time section. I think I've talked about this before, our part-timers, they're great employees, we love them, and what ends up happening is they work with us for a while, they get familiar with operating systems in law enforcement agencies, and then inevitably get snapped up by other agencies for full-time employment. So, that's been a constant battle for us. Our actual strength right now is our authorized strength, the 40 officers. We are getting ready to lose a watch commander who is attrition through retirement, September 30th, I believe, of this year. Commander Worley will be retiring, so he'll create a vacancy. I think it's down to 39. We were not able to hire an officer off our most recent round of interviews, so we're probably gonna be waiting on the January academy seat unless we get a certified officer. So, we're gonna be a little backlogged on that. And then in addition, if we do get a freeze released on that narcotics detective position, that'll increase that by one and take our end strength up to 41. In addition to that, we did receive notice from our officer who is in the military reserve that he is expected to be deployed in the fourth quarter, and it'll probably take us through the second quarter of FY 19. So, that's gonna be another manpower loss. Talked about this, I believe, at the mid-year, and maybe a little bit at the end of the year annual report, our UHF T-band migration, the situation as indicated before, all the police channels, primary police channels, and supplementary police channels are in the UHF frequency spectrum, and there is some indication that they, the FCC will be auctioning our frequency spectrum sometime between now and 2021. There is some debate as to whether or not that'll actually occur, it'll reach that far down in the spectrum, but we're planning to move either way. Our operating system is very old, it's antiquated, a lot of the hardware has not been replaced in many years, so it is, I would say, it's not failing, but it's near failing in many aspects. So, there was a study, a committee formed, and the determination has been made to move forward with the primary police channels into the Starcom 21 trunk radio system. This was the best course of action, we thought, because it will give us a greater, a much greater deal of interoperability with surrounding agencies. In addition to that, and I'm not gonna steal Chief Dyke's thunder, but recently, the TRICOM executive board on the fire side received a fairly substantial grant for them to jump into the Starcom 21 radio system as well. So, a number of other public safety anchoring points also operate in Starcom, all of DuPage counties on Starcom, some agencies to the north, our Elgin Police Department is. Aurora is in a similar private trunk system that operates in the same spectrum, but I've heard there's some discussion down there of potentially moving into Starcom as well. And then some of the agencies to the west are in Starcom 21 now as well. We had an incident recently up in St. Charles where there was a multi-agency response to a shooting, and I think there was four different radio networks for the primary police responders, and nobody could talk to each other. So, it was a perfect illustration of why something like this is an imperative. So, the plan is to move into this at sometime, hopefully next year, and the funding is probably gonna be done, hopefully, if it all works out, through TRICOM reserve funds and a recent increase in the 911 surcharges that have been statutorily increased, and it's kind of a temporary windfall for us, so we wanna spend on the hardware. And the other upside to the Starcom 21 system is that we will basically relieve ourselves of the burden of maintaining the hardware of this system going forward and moving it over to the private entity, and right now, at this point Motorola owns Starcom, the whole network, so we would essentially pay airtime and usage fees, just like we do with our cell phones. And if it breaks, they fix it. Some technology updates, some of the things that are going on right now, our mobile data terminals are being converted over to GTAC hard tablets. That's almost done. We'll have three more units left to upgrade in FY 2019, and those will come from our IS department budget. Our Doppler radars, we had two on the budget for FY 18 to purchase. We held back one, and what we did was we ended up getting some, we worked on some alternate funding through our DUI fund, so we're gonna be purchasing off that, 'cause it can be used for DUI interdiction. Portable speed sign, we have two of them, the portable ones that are battery-operated. One earlier this year, unfortunately, was damaged maliciously. It's still in repair, so we only have one active throughout the community, but the solar-powered sign that we had in the budget for this year, that was also placed on hold once we realized that the other portable was broken, we ordered it, and it has been received. They are gonna go scout a location along Batavia Avenue tomorrow, and then they'll have to apply for permits with IDOC, it's gonna be permanently fixed out there. So, somewhere in that new 30 mile an hour reduction for southbound traffic on Batavia Avenue is where we're gonna place that. And then, like I said, that'll be hardwired out there, and it'll be in place permanently. Our marked patrol units, we did have the one administrative vehicle. We were budget-approved for four vehicles this year, three marked units and one unmarked. We have not purchased the unmarked vehicle per instruction, and the other three marked units have recently arrived and are in the process of being turned over. One has actually already been turned over and is operating on the street. The other two are in transition, so we should have that done probably in the next four to six weeks. Our outfitter is formerly a Batavia business. Unfortunately, they're moving up to St. Charles, so we're dealing with that logistical effort there and slowing things down for us, but we hope to have them out there pretty soon. All three of the vehicles we're taking out of service are SUVs, and they're gonna be taken into unmarked or administrative service, so we're gonna get to continue the use of those vehicles. Then, three much older vehicles, the Ford Crown Victorias, will be moved to surplus property, and that'll be effectively the end of our history with the Crown Victoria. It's a long time, and it served us well, but these are just better platforms. And finally, our, just to roll up on our National Speed Awareness Day enforcement activities, one day, full day of Wednesday, July 25th. Eight officers were involved, they conducted 46 traffic stops overall, and you see the statistical totals there, it's where most of them were speeding, 'cause there was an emphasis on speed awareness, and then some other ones. And obviously, we have two construction zones that are active in the community right now, one on Batavia Avenue near Morton Street, the other one out at Kirk Road, I believe, in Geese or Chilum, Chilum, I think. So, it was a 40/60 split, citation to warning, and 80% of our efforts was spent on the major roads, Randall, Batavia, Kirk Road, and Fabian Parkway, and then some of others from residential areas and smaller roads. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or try.
Anybody have any questions? Marty?
There's another question. It has always just amazed me the amount of numbers that we have for personnel on staff and the amount of crime that we have, just because the department that I was on was 28,000, 29,000, so roughly about the same size city. We had 85 to 100 officers. And some of those stats, I know that the perception, there's been a lot of talk of, "Oh, my God, what's going on in our town? What's going on in our town?" Some of those stats we would blow through on a day, if not a shift, that many burglaries, that many auto thefts. And when you're living in a high-crime area, you know the quality of life and how it is. With that said, I still can't believe you do all you do with just 40. It's amazing.
Well, we do spread the peanut butter pretty thin sometimes.
I was gonna say too, I think one of the things that's happened over the past, I'd say, five years is, I think the numbers really haven't changed a lot, one way or the other, but the perception of it, because they can find out about it instantly, or they think they can find out about it instantly on social media, that, I think, is the biggest change that we're seeing is, you know, and we had it with what happened on Key Street. You know, people try to post something 'cause they wanna be the first one to do it, or they wanna get the information out to somebody, however it falls, but we've seen where there has to be some real thought about that before we just keep letting it happen.
Elliot?
With respect to the position that's on hold for the narcotics officer, do you have any numbers about, in terms of where we're at with narcotics historically in Batavia? Are we seeing a trend increasing?
I would say no, that we don't really have a trend increasing. I can say that the, our part-time officer associated with the drug, the heroin initiative has been very active. We have had one heroin death in the community this year, and that is a current active investigation, and here's the upside to being part of a task force is, not only are officers dealing with this, the entirety of the task force is working on this case, and they're hoping to bring it to a positive conclusion with charges eventually. I don't wanna get into too many details on that, but, you know, an average death investigation involving a potential heroin overdose could be in excess of 150 hours, man-hours of investigative work with all the, you know, we have a four-man unit, a four-officer unit inside of our investigation section, and this would cripple them if they had to do it by themselves. So, task forcing is, you know, definitely the way to go with this, and this just gives us another, kinda tentacle into another regional task force, and it's been extremely, an extremely positive experience so far. They're very active, they're very communicative, and we've had that really experience with all of our task force affiliations. The deployment on McKee Street, obviously, anybody who was watching social media or saw it in the paper knows that we had a fairly large SWAT footprint there. We have one officer assigned to the regional SWAT team, and we had 20, I think 26 SWAT officers deployed in that incident, and they're there within an hour. So, all these resources we can bring to bear that we just don't have organically, it's just a huge benefit to us. That's not the only one. Major crimes, Kane County Action Reconstruction, just, you know, they're just huge assets for us.
Susan?
Chief Huel, as we go forward, we've now made it halfway through the year in terms of reporting, and as you prepare a budget for next year, what will you, what is the primary hope that you have? I mean, other than getting that officer you were promised this year that you didn't get, what would it, you know, what will happen if your budget is decreased, and what will happen if you're able to just budget as you are planning to, as if everything stays the same?
Well, best-case scenario, obviously, we'd like to move forward that 41st fire. I think this, I've thought that for a long time, and it was one of the things that I wanted to change when I took over for Chief Shira, and, you know, this was just based on, you know, hard decisions he had to make, just to give a little quick history lesson. In 2009, our end strength was 45 officers, you know, we've lost 10,500 man-hours, and that's in the sworn side alone. We've lost non-sworn as well, so it was just a difficult decision. We had a drug detective at one point, and it's a hole in our game. And so, I guess what you're asking me is to, I live in the real world, I understand that there are all kinds of decisions that the city council has to make, and many of them are financially based, and there's all these external factors that really haven't played out yet. So, I would really like, I think there's a definite need for this drug position, and if I get it, that's great, we can apply it full-time. If we don't, I just, I feel like I'm gonna have to try to figure out how to reorganize again and squeeze one more officer out of our operation, our line operation, to move into this position. It's just too important. It's too important to people. It doesn't affect many people in the community, but the people that it does affect, it affects greatly.
And the second part of my question is, when I had asked you about crime-free housing, you had told me that our crime is down about 40%.
Well, that's...
And that is overall?
Calls for service.
Calls for service, sorry, calls for service.
Yes, and that was just a snapshot.
Right.
All I did was, you know, give you a quick...
Great data.
Three years before we implemented crime-free housing, and the three most recent years, two years in year-to-date, which should have been, I think, end of July statistics, and they were down approximately 40%. Since its inception, first year to now, I believe that the stats overall, and from 2011, we don't really include because it was an in-betweener year.
Right.
Part of the year we were not doing crime-free, the rest of it we were. So, from 2012 to currently, I think overall the statistics are down 30%, and that's from the first year of implementation through right now. And that's calls for service, not necessarily crime, 'cause it's more, it encompasses more than just criminal activity, and some of criminal activity doesn't encompass it all.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Mike?
You said that you're losing one officer for about a year to a deployment.
About six months is what we're projecting right now.
How do you plan to fill that gap?
Well, hire back at this point, right now, if we need to. So, we, you know, we have minimum staffing numbers in our patrol. The officer is coming out of our patrol division, which obviously is the easiest place to draw from, 'cause it just has the most manpower resources contained within it. But, he does work on a shift with limited manpower, and if we get below that minimum threshold, then we'll have to replace with hire backs. That's the plan.
Chief, I got a few questions for you. Just a common question that you hear all the time on the street, how many, and I can't say officers, what's your personnel count per shift?
The staffing level, or what, how many officers are patrolling the streets at any given time?
Both.
Okay, so, we don't have equal staffing, we have three shifts, three eight-hour shifts, from 7:00 AM, 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. On the day shift currently, we have 10 officers assigned and one traffic enforcement unit who runs a split shift between 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM to catch most of the peak traffic hours. Our afternoon shift, which is our heaviest volume shift, they handle probably 40 to 45% of our overall calls for service, which is fairly standard in the industry, they have 11 officers assigned to it. That's two supervisors and seven, I'm sorry, nine patrol officers. Our midnight shift, which traditionally deals with the fewest calls for service, but on the other hand, many of the calls they deal with, as far as calls for service, are serious in nature, they have nine officers staffed. And that's their staffing numbers, that's not, you know, that's seven days a week, 365 days a year. So, on a day-to-day basis, we can have between four officers, which is our minimum standard, and 11 officers, and honestly, it's more frequently closer to four than it is to 11. One day a week, and I won't tell you which, we have full staffing, and that, we also deal with that as an in-house training day. So, we'll do any kind of in-service things that we can do in-house, our recertifications on defensive tactics, ASH, handcuffing, those sorts of things, we try to do those, and CPR, AED will do on that, hazmat, and it eliminates overtime cost.
Okay, thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, it does, very much. Couple more questions. With being down in personnel over the years, as you have been, and we're still down, and we're losing another one to deployment, to what have you, how many overtime hours are we currently working?
I can, I don't have the answer to that question offhand. I can tell you that right now, we're below our expectation year-to-date, so we are projecting to come in under budget. We're very tight on management of overtime, and many of the things we do on overtime are outside details, which are reimbursed by the third-party entities, so they don't really come out of our overtime budget account.
I guess the thing you worry about all the time is if you're down on personnel, and you're having to work people that you have overtime to cover those, you know, vacancies, you're spending more money and you're wearing your people out, too.
Right, and that's particularly a problem right now in our records section, where we have a limited amount of employees, and right now, because of the loss of the part-time employees, we have two that are off on injuries and one that is leaving the agency abruptly, so that accounts for about 60 hours between them a week. So, what right now, we're doing right now to eliminate the burnout with the records technicians is we're augmenting it with sworn patrol officers sometimes, and that's not terribly cost-effective, obviously. A standard hourly rate for the patrol officer is much higher than the standard hourly rate for the records technician, but, you know, I only have so many people to go around, and we have to, we're a 24-hour operation, 25-hour day operation, even in our records section, there's always somebody there to answer the phone, and that's important to us, because this is an open building, and people come here all times, day and night, believe it or not, they're here in 3:00 in the morning. So, to eliminate the burnout from them, we do augment it, you know, to the extent that we, we limit it to the extent that we can, but sometimes we just really don't have any other choice.
Appreciate it. Last question I have for you, I think, is, at one time, we had talked about, could you increase the truck enforcement, and you had said that you had been doing that more this year? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Our traffic enforcement unit officer is a member of the Truck Enforcement Association, and it's not a task force, per se, but he gets all kinds of training, he gets all kinds of legal updates, legislative updates through the association, and he is very active in truck enforcement. And I can't give you the number right now, but it's much higher than it's been in previous years, where it's, we're actively focusing on truck enforcement in the community now. I'd say, you know, maybe potentially five times as much as we were doing fine-wise for overweights than we were five years ago. And in addition to that, overweight truck permitting, we've automated that system. We used to do it manually in-house in the department. I think I came to you a while back, and we talked about the ox cart system. It's being used widely throughout the state and definitely in the region, and we're having a lot of success with that, and what we're seeing is we're seeing permit numbers going up because it's easier to access, and now, with the more arduous, in the past, with the more arduous manual system, we think trucking companies were just trying to, you know, sneak by, and now they're not doing it, 'cause they don't have to, and they're applying for the permits electronically and remotely, you don't have to come in and do anything like that.
Yeah, I know, that does work a lot better, as we've had instances in town before where I've gotten a call, and somebody will apply for a permit, and, you know, sometimes you just don't know when you have to apply for a permit.
Right.
At the last minute.
Mm-hmm.
So, they send it in to you, but your truck enforcement person that's, you know, knowledgeable enough to issue the permit...
Right.
Is out on a call or not in yet because his shift hasn't started, so it causes problems, so...
Right, truck enforcement is a trained certification, so not all of our officers are truck enforcement-qualified, and a certified truck enforcement officer has to be able to do that. So, what we have now is our truck enforcement officer can do it electronically, even if he's not here at work.
Hey, Dave. Mayor, Mike, you got one?
Just one last question. Just, you know, when you're saying that at night, which could be the most difficult for an officer, from, from 11:00 to 7:00, and you might have four guys, four officers there, what kind of, it might be a difficult question and subjective, but what kind of risk are we putting those officers at?
Well, I don't think any greater, obviously, you'd rather have twice as many officers patrolling, you know, in-house officers, but, you know, we do have a pretty robust mutual aid system. So, the midnight shift, officers in the tri-cities and the surrounding area work much more cooperatively. So, you know, they'll cross borders fairly regularly to assist each other. Obviously, we share hard borders with Geneva and North Aurora and, and Aurora Police Department. So, they're, they're always out there helping each other. I worked the midnight shift for a long time and, like I said, we're, and honestly, our minimum staffing requirements have not gone up in the 22-plus years I've been here in the law enforcement agency. We did it one time, I believe, in 2007, and our overtime went up exponentially. I think it almost doubled and obviously, we got a call from the finance director. So, we're limited to that right now. So, but we were able to manage that.
Anyone else? Mayor?
Yeah. I spent today at Willis Tower in downtown Chicago. We had the CMAP Council of Mayors, the Executive Committee met today. I'm the chairman, as you know. We had, there was a number of mayors from, all parts of the region are there. And today, ironically, I got asked almost the identical question that Alderman Callahan just commented about, because I was asked how many police officers Batavia had on his force. And the mayor who asked me this question had been having a burglary problem or theft problem in his town and really getting hit hard. And he was telling me that his police chief had shared with him that, there are the opinion that there are pockets of criminal opportunity in the Chicagoan region, where they maybe lump together two or three towns. And these are the places where the criminals come shopping, where they look for garage doors open or doors open or work backyards or whatever have you. And he specifically said that he was aware that Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles were one of those, his chief had told him Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles were one of those pockets. And so, he was kind of pounding his chest because he had more, almost the same-sized town, but he had more guys on his police department in numbers than we did. And so, you know, I said, well, you know, we got great automatic aid, mutual aid, we run back and forth. And so, I just thought it was interesting when Marty made that reference, because another mayor in the region made that with me this morning, that he could not believe how, in his words, lightly we were on our manpower in Batavia, given the fact that we're in one of these identified areas of criminal opportunity. Now, that being said, and I don't mean to take anything away from the chief, but one of the things I guess I'd like to just highlight is, another question I got asked today was about TRICOM. And, you know, who's in TRICOM? And does our city police and fire departments respond together? Because in a lot of cities, it's fire protection districts, which are not part of the city. And some of them have their own fire dispatching centers and their own police dispatching centers. And, you know, again, TRICOM was cited as kind of a regional model of, you know, how we work together. And I could probably let the two chiefs speak to it, but they, I was asked, you know, how often do your police and fire departments respond together? And I said, well, I believe in both instances, it's pretty much automatic when there's a criminal activity taking place or some crime is being reported, burglary, you know, whatever, armed robbery. I'm sure all three of the other towns come, the other two towns come running to the one that's being hit with it, and the same with the fire department. And so, the one mayor made the, she made the comment to me, you've got something to be thankful for, because that's not the way it works in some of the other parts of the region. So, I just offer those two observations because they were thrown at me today in Chicago about what we're doing out here. And, you know, I think we have a lot to be very proud of and, you know, certainly want to commend the people who are running these places, because we really are stretching our resources and doing a very good job.
One last question. When we have festivals in town, actually, it's two questions. When we have festivals in town, you know, the Park District puts on a festival or the Chamber, Main Street, whatever, is that overtime staffing? Is that our regular staffing? And if it's overtime or we have to have additional officers on staff, do those groups pay for the time or how does that work?
The answer is maybe. Private events that request police assistance-
Like the races?
The first question I'll answer is, are they regular staff officers, are they hire back? And they're all hire back.
Okay.
Very rarely will staff these special events, because our footprint's so small in our line workforce in the first place, that we really can't pull from it that often. Sometimes it occurs, but rarely. So, almost always, these officers are on hire back, they're overtime status. Private events, third-party events, like I said, they, we charge the specific rate, we let them know beforehand, we tell them how many officers we think they need to provide an adequate security or safety footprint, and then they reimburse us. We will invoice them and they will reimburse us. Other events are dealt with in the, the general fund budget. Civic activities, generally speaking, like the Windmill Festival and the Forbes Live event, that's handled in-house.
And my other question, and it seems to me, I should know this based on when we talk about union contracts, are there minimum staffing requirements based on the union, too? Is it part of their contract?
It's not articulated in the contract. Staffing is considered a management right at this point.
Okay, okay.
But if we were to, obviously, if we were to increase staffing, I'm sure they would be all for that, because it reduces fatigue and, and, you know, cross-levels more workload. If we were to decrease it for some reason, we would definitely want to sit with the bargaining units and talk with their leadership and work through a process. I wish we could, you know, both be amenable to it. And I'm not advocating for that.
No, no. I just, I just couldn't remember if, if the union dictated how many people we had to have.
Some agencies, that's the case, it's articulated in their contracts, but not in ours.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. And now, we have Chief Dyke.
Boy, he was up here a long time.
We're saving that real grilling for you.
I know. I expect nothing less. So, on the first slide, you can see the, the numbers that I have so far for the first half of the year. And if you double those numbers, the projected number to the right there shows that we'll probably have about another 5% increase in calls for 20, for 2019. That's supposed to be 2019 up there, so. Oh, no, for 2018, that's right, 2018. For the last couple of years, we've increased every year on an average of between maybe 3% to 4% to 5% depending upon the year. This year so far, we've had about $162,000 worth of loss due to fire, which actually is a pretty good number. We try to keep our number, the number down to zero if at all possible. But last year, our number for, for the whole year last year was over $2 million worth of fire loss. So, I'm pretty happy with $162,000 for the first half. We just hired a fire marshal. He started yesterday. He came from the St. Charles Fire Department. He has 30 years of experience there. He was also in the Fire Prevention Bureau for two years. He has numerous certificates, including fire officer, fire instructor, advanced inspector, and public fire and life safety educator. I was gonna bring him tonight to, to introduce you to him, but he had to be with his children tonight, so. A drone was in the budget for this year and it has been purchased and it is close to being operational. We do have two people certified to fly it in the fire department, two in Public Works and one in the IT department. If you remember from the budget process, most of the time, I envisioned that Public Works will be using the drone to inspect power lines, inspect the water towers and stuff like that. But it's being kept in the fire department so that it has 24-hour access, should we need it for police activity, for fire activity, or anything else like that. The budget so far this year, most of the budget items seem to be in line with projections. Fuel will go a little bit over due to higher prices. Our station maintenance will go a little bit over, because we had to purchase a new air conditioning unit for the IT room. But on the other side, Tri-City ambulance will be under budget due to spend-down in reserves that we have. So, all in all, the, the overall budget for the fire department will be well in line and if anything, it'll be below projections. Grant status. I used to be very proud of my, my grant success, but I seem to be losing my touch these days. So, I applied for a micro grant for turnout gear and I was declined on that. The vehicle grant, I assumed I was gonna get declined on, but I ask for that every year, just, just in case. It's always good to ask. But we did get, like Dan said, the Starcom radio grant. It's a $1.4 million grant for TRICOM, for Batavia. That's a little over $200,000 worth of radio equipment that we're gonna get. It has to do with Starcom. And like Dan was saying, the, the radio equipment at TRICOM is getting old. It's due to be replaced soon, which would have cost extra money. And a lot of this money will go towards replacing all that older equipment over there. It'll also go towards us purchasing new radios in our fire department. And those radios will be on Starcom along with the police department, and that will also help us keep interoperability between the two departments. Capital expenditures this year, I was due to buy a cardiac monitor, which I bought in January. And last year, we were due to buy the, the other cardiac monitor, and I bought that in December. We bought it real close to one another, so that I was able to get a deal by buying two cardiac monitors at one time. So, I've already expended my capital expenditures for the year. For next year and for the upcoming years, that's the replacement calendar that I have. So, next year, it'll be replacing a 2004 Command Car, is what we'll be looking for for capital replacement. And that's about it. The, like I said, out in the hallway to two of the Alderman out there, my presentation's relatively short. All the fires that we've had in town are out. Nothing's burning at the time.
Quick questions for the chief? Alan?
Just one. In the, the schedule of replacements, I noticed that the ladder trucks on the shorter schedule than the other ones. Is there a reason or is that just?
The other ones, I have backups for. So, when the other ones break down and stuff like that, I go into the backup one and then I'm able to continue running them and everything like that. With having only one ladder truck, I'm afraid that if I get into the 20-year portion, the breakdowns will be so often that it'll be out of service a lot more often.
I just wondered, because I, there was another question I thought about was, you know, how has the maintenance and stuff been on that truck? With it being so big, we knew it was probably gonna wear tires out and, you know, it's just the lar, the largest vehicle we've had. Has it been okay?
It hasn't been that bad. Obviously, when you have that many tires on a vehicle, they, they do well quicker and everything else like that, but no major problems. We did have one maybe about three years ago and it had to do with the radiator, but I think it was maybe $18,000 kind of, kind of a stuff. But nothing's cheap on, on that ladder truck. Our intent, our original intent on the ladder truck was to replace it at about the 15-year mark, but you'll see that it's gone down. I've, I've moved it down. It seems to be running fine and everything else like that. So, now it's due to be replaced at, I believe, like the 18-year mark. So, hopefully, we'll make it through.
Thank you. Other questions? Dave? Jeff?
Chief, what's our average of the ambulance versus the fire and call lines? The ambulance make up what, 60, 70% of our call lines?
Ambulance makes up about 60% of our calls.
And to piggyback on that, any idea how many of those ambulance calls are lift-assist?
I gave you the numbers last year and I, and I didn't bring the numbers with me this year, but it was well over, we average a lift-assist, I think, like, almost one a day, almost one a day. So, we're somewhere around 300 lift-assists, I believe, last year, 300 or 400 lift-assists. We go on a lot of them. It's just the nature of these.
And as we've, we talked out in the hallway out here with these lift-assists, it's almost like you wish you could just have, you know, the department respond in a, in a pickup truck and go out there and help them, because why take a $650,000 engine out there and an ambulance and everything else to help with a lift-assist? But for the general public, I guess maybe the reason why is because those people are the people that are on duty and if they go out in a pickup truck and there's a fire, they have to go back to the fire station to get the fire truck.
Yes. I don't, I don't have the luxury of having enough people to, to take one or two people off of a, an engine or whatever and bring them over there in a pickup truck. I'm better off keeping them in service. And then, if they get a call while they're en route there or while they're there, they'll go to the call, to a fire or to whatever, and a mutual aid company will come in and, and help them with the lift-assist kind of thing, so.
And how is your department doing on overtime and, and personnel?
Actually, my overtime is below projection right now. Part of it, I think, is because we're, we're up to staffing, proper staffing right now. So, we're doing good.
Sure. Laura?
I just wanted to mention that there will be additional demands on the department expected with the, the two new senior housing projects that we have. 226 units out there on Wind, I'm sorry, what is it?
Fox Drive.
Fox Drive. Between Windmill Landings and Windmill Manor.
I believe it's 80, 80-some units in the one that just opened.
Exactly.
And the other one is gonna be somewhere around 100. But we, and I've said this before, we average about one call a year for every unit of senior housing that we have in town. So, that'll probably be about an extra 180 calls that we'll probably get next year that I didn't project on there, because all I did was double the numbers from the first half of this year, so.
Yeah.
Will our current staffing be able to handle that?
I think it will, at, at this time at least. The, most of the calls over at the senior centers involve ambulance calls or lift-assist. Lift-assist, we send an engine over there, that's not a problem. We should be able to do that. The ambulance calls, though, Tri-City ambulance is looking at possibly getting a sixth ambulance, at least during demand times, which is during the daylight hours, to go, to help supplement, because just about every day, we are going over to Geneva to change quarters with an ambulance, because we have just so many ambulance calls being, going, going out at one time, so.
One of the things that I have experienced recently in my career, my other life, is the company I'm with, we worked on a retirement home up in Lincolnwood. I think I mentioned this to you, but I thought I'd just share it. And not that this is anything that we could do, but it's a story where I think we're sharing, where the retirement home that we worked on had 400 and some units in it. And that was obviously gonna be quite the strain for, for the city of Lincolnwood. And they were looking to, from what I understand, they were looking to expand and put another station somewheres or what have you. And then this comes along and it was gonna be a real strain. So, what they ended up doing is they ended up working out a deal, from what I hear, where they were actually able to incorporate a ambulance bay in this retirement facility, right in the building itself. They've got sleeping quarters and the whole shot right there. It's, it's a separate entity, more or less, but it's incorporated right into the building, where when they get a call for that, for that address, they still have to be toned out and they still have to pull around and go to the front door. They don't wheel a gurney down the hallway. But it worked out very well for not only the city of Lincolnwood, because that was something that was provided for them with the annexation agreement and the PUD. And it also worked out very well for that developer, because that, when, then it was also an advertising gimmick for them, that they've got an ambulance right on premise. So, I mean, it's, it's interesting story and I don't know that either one of these projects or a future project that we may have come in, if we ever do again, would be large enough to justify that. And where it would have to be, would have to be something that would make sense, too. You know, you don't want it right next to an existing facility.
Right.
But I thought that'd be an interesting story to share.
I could see that.
Communities can work things like that out, too, so.
And it was a win-win for both parties.
Yeah. I could see that with Mooseheart or our station would probably have to have a back entrance or a south exit and entrance out of the station we have, or expanded and headed into that development, because that's gonna be another heavy use and a lot of buildings.
We'll be done and gone when that happens.
Yeah. Eventually, that'll happen.
We'll say that.
We'll be the ones going for the ride.
Yeah.
Mayor, did you have something more?
Yeah. As all of you, I think all of you know, I serve as the chairman of the, among other[1797.76] chairmanships I have, I serve as the chairman of the Tri-City Ambulance Board. And, you know, we've been in business since 1982 with that. And it's basically, it's Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. And the three chiefs run the service. But we move those five ambulances every day between cities and wherever they need to go. And when we get four of them busy, we always move the remaining ones to Geneva's East Side Station to put it central to the whole coverage area, and then it needs to go someplace. But what I wanted to share with you is, is that, I guess it was two years ago now, when the Rana administration was running around the state trying to find some examples of cost-effective governmental consolidation. They ended up finding us. And we were, myself and Chief Deike and Chief Olson and Chief Shellstreet from St. Charles, all got invited up to Elgin Community College, where the Governor's Task Force on Governmental Consolidation came in. And they asked us to put out a presentation of how we did it, what it cost, how we were able to move all these around, and why it's been in business so long with no breakups. And when it was all over and done with, and I certainly talked, as did the chiefs from Geneva and St. Charles and Chief Deike, as to, you know, what all the answers to their questions were. A gentleman who is now, I believe, the chairman of the McHenry County Board, who has always been kind of an independent thinker, got up in front of everybody and said, "Well, I think we have found it. This may be the very best example of governmental consolidation in the state of Illinois as far as the cost-effectiveness of it and how well it works." And so I guess we were then proclaim that, because we had several photo occasions where the Lieutenant Governor came and we all had a go. And they patted us on the back and gave us applause for the way we run this thing, because there are a lot of areas in the state of Illinois who are attempting to find governmental consolidation. But for whatever reason, they can't get the minds together and the groups to work with it. And ours is a bit unique and it's, you know, works very extremely well. But I think that the cost-effectiveness of it is probably one of the things that speaks as well to it of anything that we're doing. So I just wanted to share with you that, you know, our ambulance service is used as a state model of how to run an ambulance service amongst multi-jurisdictions.
Well, and then even to go further than that, not only do you have the Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles mutual aid, but you've all, I mean, quite often you'll see Fermilab come in and do a standby at a station, or West Chicago, or you'll go out to Auburn and stand by there, or help them with a pumper truck or something like that. So it's all about the communication and working together.
It's all about playing the odds, you know? The fact of having three or four fires at the same time usually doesn't happen. So, you know, if one fire is going on, we kind of all kind of help them out. And then we all come back and, you know, make sure that there's enough to handle a second fire or a third fire. But most of the time, that doesn't happen. So you play the odds.
Susan?
Just as a shameless plug for sitting on the Tricom Board. One of the things that we have been talking about frequently, and this is outside the scope of our city council, but because we're on camera, one of the things that we have been struggling with is the number of dispatchers. We are way low and very shorthanded in terms of dispatchers. So I always am putting out a public call, whether it's on Facebook or LinkedIn, for people to consider going through the test to find out if you have aptitude towards it. It's a great job. It pays well. It's stressful, of course, but the right people, it makes all the difference in the world. And you want to make sure someone's there to take your call when you dial 911. So I always ask people to try to step up if they know anyone, someone who has decided college is not the right career path for them. What is the entry age now? Is it 19?
It's 19.
19? And the pay starts in the 40-some thousand dollar range?
Yeah. And taps out in 80s or something, I think. 80s or 90s.
So it's a terrific career path if you have the right disposition. And I can say that we have a great staff. We have a great facility out in Geneva for a Tricom. So that's my shameless plug for the evening.
Very stressful job, though, I think.
No. Oh, heck no, Dave. I could do it. Can't you imagine?
I can't imagine you talking to somebody else.
They'd be jumping. They would be jumping. They'd be like, "Oh, forget you. I'm jumping."
They are an important link for us. Without them, we wouldn't be able to be nearly as efficient as we are.
Anyone else?
Mike, off question. This might be off-base a little bit, but we hit that truck from Central through Page up here that one day. And I was just kind of curious, has that ever been utilized?
Oh, yeah. It was down for the last week for service, but it gets utilized in Batavia alone probably three times a week, I'll bet. It gets utilized a lot. And then between the three cities, I bet you it's coming out here, it's coming out here probably five times a week?
I'll be happy to send the Alderman an article that's an update of it that was published, oh, maybe a week and a half ago. And former Alderman Botterman actually was an individual. He shared his story about...
He was a patient.
He was a patient. And his life was perhaps saved by the availability of that. To think that there are only three of these in the world, and our residents have use of that is just amazing.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay. Item eight, project status.
Okay, just a few things. We were talking about the Windmill Manor and Windmill Landings projects. Windmill Manor has all of their certificates of occupancy. And the developer reports that they are already 100% leased there.
No way.
Yeah. So the same developer is involved in the Windmill Landings project, which is right across the street from this. And of course, he's very anxious to get started. And we are working with them so that things can go more smoothly from a plan review and a unit inspection, so that we can make sure that we are as efficient as possible in bringing those new units online, because obviously there's a demand for them. Also, making good progress on the sidewalk on Smith Court. We have agreements that we've drafted and presented to the adjacent property owners. And I think that was just a really nice example of how different government entities and residents can work together to find a mutually acceptable solution. And we hope that that sidewalk will be something that the school will be able to utilize this coming school year. We're receiving good feedback on our Slow Down campaign, even from people in other towns. They say, "Boy, I wish we could get some of those signs up here." And Chris Cudworth said that he saw one that was a little ways down the road that wasn't...
Mooseheart Road.
Yeah. I saw that one, too. And the subdivision behind Mooseheart Road, there's one in there, too. But it also is prompting a lot of good discussions on social media about driving slower through neighborhoods. People have identified, you know, their own areas of the city where they feel like people are driving too fast. So it really is maybe heightening awareness. And I think that's the greatest potential for this campaign, is just raising awareness. Because I don't think anybody goes fast through the neighborhoods because they aren't concerned about kids running around out there. I really believe that they're just not thinking about it. And so this campaign really helps them to do that. But we plan on doing a survey once the campaign has concluded, in order to provide you with some information about whether it's effective for the money that was spent on it. Also, there are just a ton of projects that the Public Works Department is engaged in. The large diameter storm sewer continues to be installed at Geese and Kirk Road. That'll serve as the outfall for the multi-year Ward 1 drainage project. New water services have been installed in Area 3. And the old lead services to homes have been abandoned. The contractor still has another week of work in the western portion of the project before they return to the intersection of Morton and Route 31. The intersection will be completed and a final pavement install around the end of August. There is work being done on the Fox River Streambank stabilization project. You'll notice that the work is beginning down south where our utilities are, and then will continue north. We had a pre-construction meeting held this week for the 2018 street resurfacing program, so that should get underway very soon. And the first phase of the Wilson College Storm Sewer Project is anticipated to begin construction by the end of August. This is gonna impact forests and Cleveland streets throughout the fall months. We're finally getting to the part in the wastewater treatment plant project, where we're able to tick off some items as completed. And they're doing landscape restoration in that area. But obviously, there's still a lot of work remaining to be done. As Jerry gives us his monthly updates, it's always exciting to see project, work being done on that project. It's a big one for us. As well, the work on the City Hall Windows and Masonry Project continues on the south and the west side of the buildings now. And the contractor says that he's still confident that it will be substantially completed before the onset of winter. Also, pretty soon, you're gonna see work begin on the dam signage is due to be installed toward the end of August and the beginning of September. So you'll see that. And then also, the staff met with Geneva and St. Charles to discuss bidding for branch collection services. We like to do that in a consolidated fashion and hope that then we get contractors who are willing to provide us with some better prices. I also wanted to point out, Chris Cudworth and Chris Aiston had put together a brochure about our city and the advantages of locating your business here. It was done kind of as a last-minute request from a developer who was working with a hotel chain to look at potential locations within our city for a hotel site. And the Chamber of Commerce, we involved them in the creation of that document. And now they've come to us because they have a local employer who has some high-profile positions within their company that they would like information about our city and how great it is to live here. So the brochure is being adapted for that purpose. So just wanted to thank Chris for his work on that. His talents and resources really help us to put together a professional-looking report for those purposes. And then, as well, I guess I want to talk a little bit about home rule. And that we are wanting to make sure that with regard to the question about home rule, that everyone is as educated as they can be by the time they get to the ballot box, so that they understand what that question is and what voting one way or the other specifically means. And so we talked about putting together some communication pieces around that. But also to have an opportunity to have in-person meetings, likely in the month of September and early October, to give the public the opportunity to ask any questions that they might have along the way.
Like a town hall?
Like a town hall meeting, yeah. So, and then what would come from that, because, you know, oftentimes, we schedule several meetings, but for whatever reason, people can't make those meetings. The results of those meetings, the questions that are asked and the answers that are provided are the good basis to put together a document that if they couldn't be here in person, then at least maybe they can read it online. And we will be working with BATV to make sure that those meetings are televised as well. Yes?
In regards to the stormwater project?
Mm-hmm.
I know things have been bumped back. Do we have an estimated completion date for that Phase 1 outfall?
On DC?
Yeah. Yeah.
During September.
Okay.
By October.
Yeah. And if anyone has, wants to see a big pipe, those are stinking huge. I mean, that should help just with that phase, I would imagine.
I've seen bigger pipes.
I have one. When we were talking about the speeding issues and the signs and everything, I've noticed, I do a lot of test drives during the day in town, and I see a lot of issues with traffic. One of the things I've noticed, and has been brought to my attention by several people that live in different neighborhoods, is some of the stop signs on Wilson Street, especially Wilson and Lincoln going east, is either blocked or not obvious enough for people to see. I know in the past, when we put new stop signs up, we've used the flashers. They've got like eight flashers on the front of it or whatever to alert people to those signs. There's a couple of them that I think we maybe should use those at, or at least make sure they have really good sightlines if we have to trim trees or whatever, to make them more obvious. One is at, that one at Lincoln and Wilson. The other one is at Van Ortwick and McKee Street. When there's nobody else around out there, people just fly right through that stop sign. And I'm sure 90% of the problem is probably somebody on their phone. But if you can draw attention to it with maybe those flashing stop signs there for a month at a time or something, I think that's something that we should try. And I'd like to do it before we have some major accidents there, because I've seen several, you know, where people at 35 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, just go right through the stop sign.
I would like to add Lincoln and McKee. It's another one where there are a lot of close calls. You familiar with that one?
At Lincoln and McKee? What, people going across on Lincoln or... See, I'm saying that they just blow right through the stop sign.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And the other one, again, is McKee Street.
Wilson and Lincoln, you're finding that?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Especially early in the morning. And I think some of it, for a while, was sun-related.
Well, it could be, yeah.
Where people can't see it.
Yeah.
And then the other one is at, what is it, Jackson and McKee Street. That's another one.
The sun is really bad there, though.
Where there's nobody there, people go right through that stop sign. And I know that the police have done a lot of enforcement on Main Street, especially Main and Jackson, where, I got pulled over there. It is a real easy one, when you're not paying attention, to go right through it. So I think if we can make those a little bit more obvious, and I see you grabbed a mic back there.
Yeah. So we will certainly check visibility with, with trimming trees. Our policy has been to avoid going down the path of lighted stop signs.
Okay.
They're expensive. I mean, to outdo a four-way stop is, you know, $4,000 to $6,000. And I don't want to tell you how many four-way stops there are.
Right.
Because as soon as we put one in your neighborhood, we'll have 100 people lining up with one in their neighborhood.
But I mean, just to draw attention to those locations.
Well, again, another way to do it is the red reflective on the post itself. That's a standard, acceptable practice.
Okay.
That I also ask about and see if we can...
Okay.
That's actually relatively inexpensive.
Okay.
The flashing ones, we use when we install a new sign.
Right.
That's when we deploy the flashing ones. And we do have them out there for four to six weeks, and then we replace them with the standard stop sign.
Okay. And we're still using those when we... Do we use them for any other thing, or do they just hang out?
Flashing ones?
We decide we put a new sign out.
Yeah. We don't deploy the flashing ones as a standard sign out in the field.
Okay.
For the reasons I just said.
Okay.
And it's expensive. And if you deploy one of them, you're gonna be deploying 100 of them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Got any questions for Laura? Do we have any others?
Yeah, I'd like to just throw one. Again, going to my meeting in Chicago today, I had the chance to see our friends from IDOT. And they were reporting to me that they had had a very, they thought a very fruitful meeting with Gary Holm and Tim Graham, I believe it was, from our city engineering department, relative to the, hopefully, coming improvement of South Prairie Street from Wilson down to Pine. And they indicated they thought we had overcome most of the issues or agreed to most of the parameters. And I just talked to Gary briefly before the meeting. He says he's gonna be bringing this to you within the next few weeks here at some point.
That's correct, yeah. So we'll bring the options for Pine Street to you, so, Gary Street to you, so that you can see those. And at the same meeting, we're also hoping to bring the options for Main Street. So both of those things will be coming to you in the next couple of weeks.
So at the same meeting, we also, now this is the group that distributes the federal transportation money for the region. So it needs to say, this place gets a lot of attention. There were a lot, that's why I had a lot of mayors sitting in there with me today. Another project that Batavia has on the carpet for this is, Gary just mentioned, Main Street from Water out to Van Ortwick. And the total federal allotment to Batavia for those two projects is, I believe, $2.5 million for Main Street and $1.8 million for Prairie Street. And then there's a third project, which, as you may remember, a few months back, we entered into a partnership with Kane County Highway Department, who is the quote-unquote "lead agency." is the quote-unquote lead agency on it. And that's to erect a traffic signal at Deer Path Road and Main Street. And there's been some property acquisition that the county's been entertaining out there and going ahead and doing it. So needless to say, some of my fellow mayors were pointing out to me, now, you have to appreciate that this is all in a federal program. And the federal programs come in blocks, and everybody applies and gets your awarded project. But then there's a deadline on these. And there's new federal rules that some people are quite concerned about, that if you don't get your project up and running by a given date, the money comes off the table and the feds take it back. And in the case of us, it's October of 2020. Now, we've got to have all three of these things at least under construction by that time, or we really seriously would consent, will face the possibility of losing the 80% federal funding, which, in the case of these three projects together, we haven't bid them yet, so we don't know the numbers. But it could be, total, it could be about $5 million, of which Batavia would get 80% of it paid for by the feds on Wilson and on Prairie. And then we would split the 20% local match with Kane County and Deer Path and Main Street. So that is a heck of a lot of money. And as Peggy Coby and I have talked about, you know, that's why we have to have a little kitty here as to why we need to have, you know, the monies that we have to have, because we're going to have some pretty heavy-duty expenses. And if we don't use, if we don't respond to this and get it, Batavia potentially loses all this federal money. So we're under the gun here a little bit. But I think we can do it. And needless to say, our gas tax is a major player in that whole situation.
Good to hear. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.